Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,230th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat and/or vacating petitions, and the Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our acting secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Long?
Here.
Droz?
Here.
Ventura?
Here.
Denaro, here. Wilshaw?
Is here, and then absent is Cara Magno and Bonjero. Also with us tonight, we have Mr. Canti, and we also have Ms. Reese, both from our Planning Department. They'll be assisting us throughout this meeting. For folks in our audience who haven't been to one of our meetings, our planning staff will give background information on each of these petitions. We'll then have the petitioner come forward and speak on the item, and if anyone else in the audience is wishing to speak for or against the item, they'll be given an opportunity to speak as well before we make our decision. With that, we're going to begin with the public hearing section of our agenda, item number one.
Petition 2025-04-02-09 submitted by Costco Wholesale Corporation is requesting waiver use approval under Sections 3.12 and 6.26 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to expand the existing fuel facility and parking lot at the Costco Wholesale at 19540 Hagerty Road, located at the southeast corner of Hagerty Road and Eight Mile Road in the northwest 1/4th quarter section of Section 6.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Mr. Canti, would you like to give us background on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is petition 2025-04-02-01, I mean 09, for the Costco on Hagerty. It is to expand the existing fuel facility and parking lot at the Costco Wholesale. The site is vacant, the site that we are looking at right now, that is in yellow. It is vacant with an existing detention pond, Zone C4. To the north is the existing fuel facility and the existing Costco, Zone C2. To the west is the apartment complex, Zone C2, as well. To the east is 275 and I- 96, actually, the freeway, and to the south is the pump station, Zone C4. The aerial on the next slide, which is the current existing conditions, as you can see the site is vacant, they will be adding more parking to their existing Costco site, and they will be expanding the existing fuel station area. The petitioner proposes to add 14 new pumps to the existing 16 pumps under a newly constructed 9240 square foot canopy. The new 22.5-foot-tall fuel pumping station will have 30 new pumps. The site access to the new parking lot will be from a new 30-foot-wide access road. Surface lanes will be added as well because of the new circulation and the new site plan placed in front of you today shows that there will be a new drive and island to address the traffic concerns that we had at the study session. Circulation plan does not plan for an access of more than 70 vehicles, however, we did just address that just a second ago. There will be a fuel indicator system atop of the canopy to show when there's an open pump, so cars can keep on flowing through without any backups or stacking of cars. For the parking area and the new vacant land, there will be, let me see, there will be 15 new parking spaces facing the Costco building on the north side of the parking lot. There'll be five spaces facing the new fuel canopy, 24 parking spaces facing the south of the parcel, and in the middle, there will be 83 new parking spaces for customers, including spaces for carts and all that stuff. The landscaping plan submitted indicates that there are, on the outer edges of the site, that there will be, that they will be landscaped with a variety of plant materials, including 25 canopy trees and 14 evergreen trees. The landscape plan provides evergreen screening along 275. The proposed landscaping should provide adequate screening of adjacent properties. The photometric plan shows areas in access of the 20-foot candle maximum under the gas station canopy. The parking area is also in the access of the off-street parking foot candles, but are consistent with the other existing parking area, so there shouldn't be a problem there. Signage would be, pretty much, the elevation plan indicates that four wall signs will be installed since they're making a new canopy, and these signs would be 20 square feet each in the sign area for a total of 80 square feet, which satisfies the sign requirement. We also have correspondence from the different departments.
Sure, if you'd like to read that out?
We have the Engineering Department. We have, in accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition and have no objections to the proposed waiver at this time, but would like to note the following items. Number one, the subject parcel is assigned the address of 19540 Hagerty Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner should contact this department once approvals are obtained. Number two, the existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer. Private Water Main and Storm Sewer are available on the abutting parcels, although the proposed project will not require utility services. Utility information, specifically storm detention calculations, have not been submitted with the drawings, but we do not believe that there will be any adverse effects by the proposed project. Number three, the developer will need to submit engineering drawings and calculations to this department once approvals have been received to determine what permits will be required from this department. Calculations will need to show proposed storm water runoff and detention from the site and the available capacity in the receiving detention basin. Number four, after the subject parcel was transferred ownership, the developer shall contact the assessor's office to combine the parcel with the existing gas station and store parcels. That is from Assistant City Engineer David Lear. We have fire. This office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to renovate a gas station and gas pump lot and space on the property located at the above address. We have no objections to this proposal, but the following stipulations. Concerned with the removal of a fire hydrant that can hinder a slow suppression efforts during potential gas fire or multi-vehicle fire, the closest hydrant, which would be keynote 16 or 18, keynote 18, possibly unnoticed hydrant in the lower, in the drawing closer to, closer in proximity. So basically, we might need to look at the hydrants looking forward. If the proposed hydrant removal is changed to keep as existing landscaped, which cannot interfere with its access. A further detailed review and plan will take place when this division receives an official plan set, and that is the Fire Marshal Brian Kukla. This is the Police Traffic Safety. I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to the proposals. That is Traffic Bureau Sergeant Paul Walters. And we have, actually, we have two more. We have inspections. Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition was received, and this department has no objections to this petition. I trust this provides the requested information, which is Jerome Hannah, the Director of Inspection. And we have Susan Nash, the City Treasurer, saying that all taxes are paid on the property. And we do have a presentation from the proponent as well.
Okay. We will have the petitioner come up, and he can address the items in his petition. So, thank you for that information. Is there any questions any of the staff have, or excuse me, any of our fellow commissioners have for staff? No questions? Okay. The petitioner is in our audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium. You can come to either one, and we'll ask that you start with your name and address for our record. Good evening.
All right. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hi, I'm Kayleen Burnett. My address is 730 Lake Drive in Issaquah, Washington, 98027. Thank you for having us here. As we prepared a short presentation, it's going to be a little bit redundant, so bear with me. We're submitting the application for the waiver use approval to permit the existing station to increase our number of fuel dispensers and add additional parking for members and employees. The existing site, we have a 162,000-square-foot building and 688 parks, and it sits on about 15 acres. We're under contract to purchase the additional property. It's five acres, which will bring our total site to 20 acres. As a clarification for the gas expansion, we're proposing seven pumps extra with additional 14 fueling positions, bringing the total count to 30 fueling positions. The additional dispensers will improve current operations by reducing the queuing and wait times compared to the existing station. As we, this is our enlarged plan, and I have with me Adam Bergdahl from Kittleson and Associates, who can discuss the traffic control measures that we put in place based on feedback. So if you have questions, he can backfill those. If you go to the next. These are fuel elevations. As we, as Mr. Canti said, it will match the existing design. The, we're adding additional signage on all four sides of the canopy and the red light, green light indicator system, which helps get members through the queue as, a little bit faster than not having the indicator lights. And then the, this is our proposed queuing scenario, and the additional parking, the site lighting will match the existing site lighting on the site. And as we spoke about, the storm water is managed, there's an existing pond, and we will provide the same access to the other properties that are using the storm detention system. And that's basically it. We have a few existing conditions, photos. It'll look the same, just slightly bigger if we're approved. And we hope that the approval of this waiver will allow us to provide the highest quality member service and for this community. So if you have any questions, I'm here, and so is Adam.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Ms. Burnett, for your presentation. And yeah, our staff has a tendency to sort of spoil the-
Surprise!
-a lot of those presentations. They do a great job of researching these. So let's see if there's any questions for you. Any questions for our petitioner, Mr. Denaro?
Can you, can you just walk us through the difference in this updated, in this updated plan?
Yes, yes. I think Adam's probably the best person to, yes. And we've added a trash enclosure that was also on the plan, if you want to point that out.
Yeah, I'll talk about that. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, so Adam Bergdahl, Kittleson Engineering, PA, 143 North Woodland Boulevard, Deland, Florida, 32720.
Very good. Thank you.
So in the, in the plan in the last week since the study meeting, we've made a couple of modifications to the access to really clean up circulation nearby the gas. And if we could pull up, there's a zoomed-in version in one of the slides that we had shared. I think that'd be the best one to work with. This, yeah, this one right here. Perfect. Okay, so the key differences that we have here are the drive that comes in off of Hagerty, currently it goes straight to the fuel canopy. We deflected that to make a plussed-up intersection, so it curves, and while, when it curves, and we have a stop-controlled intersection there, now we have the opportunity to turn, you know, left through right in a very orderly manner. That also created a little bit extra green space on the site that can be accommodated by that roadway deflection. As we continue on further to the east, you'll see another stop-controlled intersection that aligns with the existing north-south roadway that runs on the west side of the gas field today. And that intersection is now, it's kind of a free-for-all, a wide-open space, and so now that has order, you know, with some stop control built in. And to get that to align, it triggered another improvement up to the north where by parking that was in the existing field is now being relocated up against the building, and the drive aisle shifts to actually not, or now it's straight at the main building entrance. Right now, it kind of deflects over back toward the building. That, we just straightened that out to be able to save some of that parking that was there. What's not shown on this plan and should be, there are two emergency access points on the building. So I think this graphic shows two or three more parking spaces than would actually be in front of the building. We would occlude those spaces, you know, just like, it's similar to the middle belt site where, you know, there's parking right along the building, but at those emergency access, there's parking that's not allowed.
That's hashed off.
Yeah, exactly. And so, yeah, just a couple of site plan modifications there. In the more zoomed-out view of the site plan, we can see the trash enclosure that was added is just to the west, right, yeah, so right, it's very hard to see here, but yeah, right there, like a dark spot right above the parking lot, that cleans that up a little bit.
Okay, very good. And that trash enclosure will be made of masonry material that matches the building, I take it?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. Mr. Denaro, I think you had the floor. Is there any other questions that you had for?
That's it for me.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Droz, do you have?
Just to offer, and I was gonna let Mr. Ventura bring this up. Do you have any comments on signage? I think we talked at the study session about potentially adding a little more directional signage, just for some of the people that are using this to kind of know, you know, where, how to get back to Hagerty, how to get to Seven Mile. That was one of the things that, it means nothing significant, but wayfinding.
Yeah, we can, we have that within a lot of sites nationwide, and, you know, we can have like two Hagerty, you know, they're small, relatively non, they're conspicuous signs, but they're not, you know, overpowering and can help sort people out, and they, because of the membership-type clientele that we have, they will learn that very quickly with this, and we see a lot of benefits from that.
Very good.
I think this is great. Everything we talked about is picked up. It's great.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Droz. And, yeah, that was a, the issues of traffic flow within the property was something Mr. Droz brought up at our study meeting, and I think it was very wisely discussed, and you've made some good-looking changes in terms of trying to minimize pain points that exist where you have angular traffic coming into straight traffic, and, you know, it's hard for people to see and so on. So I think you've addressed that nicely. Any other questions or comments from any of the other commissioners? Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anybody leaping out of their seat. Anything else you'd like to say before we make our decision?
Just thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you both for being here tonight. I know you have a long flight to come from Washington over here, so thank you, appreciate that. If there's no other questions or comments, I will close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long, and mind you, we have a written motion.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution at the request to expand the existing fuel facility and parking lot at the Costco Wholesale. At 19540 Hagerty Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. Number one, the detailed site plans identified as Sheet DD 11-09 dated May 15, 2025, prepared by MG2, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, approval is contingent upon the petitioner completing a study to determine what is required to reduce turning conflicts and improve internal traffic circulation to the gas pumps and new parking area. The study shall be submitted to the City of Livonia Engineering Division for review with all required improvements being completed before the operation of the new fuel pumps. Number three, the landscape plan identified as Sheet L 1.0 dated April 9, 2025, prepared by Kim Lee Horn and Associates, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, all disturbed lawn areas shall be sodded instead of hydroseeding. Number five, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and after that, permanently maintained and healthy condition. Number six, the fuel elevations plan identified as DD 31-01 dated April 9, 2025, prepared by MG2, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, any illumination of the pump island canopy shall be restricted to the undercarriage, and all light fixtures shall be recessed and flushed with the established ceiling. However, this section shall not apply to those specified signs expressly allowed by district regulations of this zoning ordinance. Number eight, only conforming signage is approved with this petition. Any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number nine, no part of the pump island canopy fascia except for signage shall be illuminated. Number 10, no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the pump island canopy, building, or around the windows. Number 11, under Section 6.2611, free air shall be provided whenever this station is open for business. The free air shall be dispensed at the point of service without entering the station or performing any extra action to obtain the air without charge. Number 12, unless approved by the appropriate local, by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising, such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists, shall be prohibited. Number 13, all light fixtures shall not exceed 35 feet in height and shall be shielded to minimize glare trespassing on adjacent properties and roadways. Number 10, all parking spaces, except the required handicap spaces, shall be doubled, double striped at 10 feet wide by 20 feet in length as required. Number 15, that the three walls of this trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the building. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting, solid panel fiberglass. The trash dumpster area shall be maintained and, when not in use, closed at all times. Number 16, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number 17, under Section 13.13 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for one year only from the date of approval by City Council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
There's support.
Okay. We have a motion to approve made by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Droz. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll on the motion to approve.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Droz?
Aye.
Ms. Denaro?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
And Chair Wilshaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes, and then we'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. Good luck with your project. Now we move on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda, item number two. Madam Secretary, when you're ready.
Petition 2025-03-08-05 submitted by Citiescape Architects on behalf of Comerica Bank, requesting site plan approval under Section 13.13 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to renovate the building and reconfigure the parking lot at 17111 Laurel Park Drive North, located at the northwest corner of Six Mile Road and Laurel Park Drive in the southwest quarter of Section 7.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Canti?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is petition 2025-03-08-05, Comerica Bank on North Laurel Park Drive. It is to renovate the existing Comerica Bank facade and to reduce the parking lot size. The petition is, the petition parcel is Zone C4, high-rise commercial. To the west, we have, the abutting property is the new Cooper's Hawk and Capital Grill that is zoned C4, that is under construction right now. To the south, across Six Mile, is the Red Robin, Zone C1. And to the north are the two hotel sites, both Zone C4. And to the east is the Panera Bread Drive-Thru, Zone C1, outside of the ball. The aerial shows where the Comerica Bank is. The building envelope and the structure will not change, they're just changing the facade. The parking lot and green space will be changing. Site access from the south will be removed. That was to the existing ATM that is existing right now, and that will be removed as well. Access parking and impervious services will be swapped for two detention ponds. There are, there's a new dumpster enclosure to the northwest of the building. The dumpster enclosure will have gates painted with steel panels with vertical metal panels and color to match the brick of the enclosure wall. Parking would be, parking and savings loan associates require one parking space for each 150 square foot of floor space. Right now, they pretty much have satisfied that. The petitioner predicts eight employees at this Comerica branch, and there are 38 parking spaces required, and they show 38 parking spaces with two van-accessible spaces. The landscape plan, there are 12 trees currently on site. The tree preservation plan shows the petitioner removing two of those trees that will prevent the development of the two detention ponds, as well as two parking lot trees that will prevent the development of the new compact parking lots. The landscape plan also shows 44 trees, 187 shrubs, 186 perennial plants for the whole site, and there are three oak trees adjacent to the proposed detention ponds, four crab-apple trees at the corner of Six Mile and Laurel Park Drive, spruce trees lining the west property line, seven hackleberry trees along Six Mile, tulip trees along North Laurel Park Drive, and three serviceberry trees to the north of the building. The elevation plan shows the new facade with glen, gary, crystal, blackfin, and full bricks with matching mortar. Blue metal panel that is similar to the color of the Comerica Bank logo, made with alpolic materials. Brushed aluminum and faux cedar wood will be used in the new facade. Signage, there was no signage package submitted with the petition, but several new signs are shown in the renderings. But several new signs are shown in the renderings. Most signs appear to be in the same location with the exception of the large wall sign that replaces the existing drive-through window. And the photo metric plan that was submitted, um, does not have any foot candles exceeding point one, I mean, one, one point oh, uh, foot candles at the property line, so that's all good. And we have correspondence as well.
Before we do correspondence, is there any, uh, plans that you want to show on the screen for viewing audience?
So this would be the, let me see, existing, the topographic. This would be the engineering plan. As you can see, they're taking out, it's a lot of this and changing it to two detention ponds, but also changing the ATM that's there, removing the drive at the south side of the property and replacing it with parking. This is the sediment, uh, soil erosion control. And I believe they have the landscape plans. This is currently in the preservation plan, that we're moving to take the two trees at the north of the property and the two trees inside of the parking lot to make way for the new detention pond.
Very good. All right, and, uh, did you want to read correspondence from our staff?
Uh, yes, I can do the engineering. In accordance with your request of the Engineering Division, has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time, but would like to note the following items. The subject parcel was assigned to, oh, number one, the subject parcel is assigned the address of seventeen one 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 Laurel Park North Drive. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner should, uh, contact this department once approvals are obtained. The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer and Water Main, as well as a private storm sewer. The developer should contact and submit engineering drawings and calculations to this department once approvals for the site have been received to determine if permits will be required. Based on the submitted drawings, we have the following comments. Sanitary sewer, the developer is proposing to reuse the existing service lead and maintain, and maintain the same building usage, so no additional effects to the system is expected. Water main, comments would be the, the drawings indicate that the existing water service will be reused. And number three would be the storm sewer, the drawings indicate that existing private storm system will remain and will be modified to add detention to the site. No calculations have been provided, but we will review the proposed improvements when plans are submitted to this department for permitting. That is from Assistant City Engineer David Lear. We have fire. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. Maintain access of emergency vehicles around the entire building with lifts of twenty feet six inches per code for potential suppression efforts. Landscaping cannot interfere with our road or fire hydrant access. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set. That is from Fire Marshal Brian Kukla. Now we have Traffic Bureau from police. We have, I have received the plans in connection with this petition. I have no objections to the proposals. That is from Paul Walters, Sergeant. This department has no objections to your petition. This is the Inspections Department from the Director Jerome Hannah. And we have City Treasurer Susan Nash, which says that all taxes are paid on the property. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Canty. Is there any questions for our planning staff? Mr. Drows?
Mr. Chair, this question for Mr. Canty, um, are you able to show, um, the elevations? We saw them at the work session. I thought they had, okay, yeah, these are black and white as well. I was curious to, to see what color brick was proposed. And maybe we can talk to the applicant about that.
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
We'll do that.
No further.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium. Again, we'll ask you to start with your name and address, and good evening.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Luke Woods. I'm here from Citiescape Architects representing Comerica Bank. My associate is Tim Wood, uh, civil engineer with Novak and Fraus. My address is one five five six East Lafayette, Detroit, four eight two oh seven. And thank you for the introduction to the, uh, for the project for the group here, Mr. Canty. So speaking to this project, uh, we have a thriving Comerica Bank. Comerica is interested in, uh, investing in a renovation for this building that encompasses the site, the exterior of the building and the interior. A large goal for the site here is reducing the paving and parking spaces. This, uh, as we've already heard, has been eliminating the curb cut in the southeast corner. We're removing a considerable number of parking spaces, adding a dumpster enclosure that, uh, with materials that'll complement the building. Also adding dry bottom retention ponds in the north portion of the site. We'll be redoing the site lighting as well. New landscaping. We'll be maintaining, uh, a good count of the trees. We'll also be cleaning up the hedges on the west side of the lot as we discussed at the study meeting a week ago. Uh, and as mentioned, we're moving the ATM, which was formerly out in the parking lot, to the drive-through. So as we look onto the exterior of the building, we're gonna, the primary goal is bringing it up to Comerica's brand standards. That's going to be done by staining the exterior brick a darker color here. The ACM, that blue metal alpolic paneling, uh, is going to be at the entry and over at the drive-through. The faux wood that was mentioned is a fiber cement board, very durable material here with great longevity. The canopy will be extending ever so slightly to provide additional protection for those using the last drive-through aisle. And to accommodate that, we'll be, uh, increasing the width of the bypass lane just to make sure that everything's, uh, um, accessible around the, around the building here. And as mentioned, uh, signage will also be included into the, uh, onto the building in accordance with Livonia's, uh, ordinance says. That is the rundown for our project. We are available for any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Uh, is there any questions for our petitioner? Mr. Drows, I believe, uh, already, uh, asked one about the color of the, the brick. Do you have any sample or any ideas what that's going to be?
Sure. Yeah, the brick is, it's pretty dark color. It's not quite a black, but it's, uh, it's kind of similar to the charcoal of the desks here. I would say it's, you know, maybe a touch darker than that and, you know, with a little bit of a flatter tone to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, any other questions for our petitioner?
I guess I had a couple, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Drows.
In the, uh, the fire letter, um, it talked about a, I think it was a twenty-foot drive aisle, um, around the perimeter. So I think probably the biggest thing I was wondering about is that canopy. And it sounds like, will you be able to provide the full twenty foot in that area with the overhang still?
I see where you're coming from. At a glance, it looked to be, I think I saw twenty-six from the curb. Okay, excellent. Um, I, we will make sure we, uh, adhere to the twenty-foot dimension there. Uh, I think we're really just looking for maybe three or four feet of canopy extension into that, but I appreciate your mindfulness towards that.
Okay. Um, and then I don't know what the rest applies to, whether that whole driveway needs to be twenty feet or not. I'll defer to fire on that. I think the site is essentially the same. If it needs to be increased, because it looks like it's eighteen foot currently. Reading the dimension, so that's not a big deal. I guess the other question, you mentioned the dry bottom detention basin. Is there anything in particular that you wanted to highlight regarding the restoration of that? You know, basically to make sure that that's going to be able to withstand the inundation and also, you know, be mowed down. So it, you know, part of it, where I'm coming from with this is, you know, sometimes a detention basin can have a little more natural look, depending where it's at, but this is in a fairly, I'll say manicured, commercial landscape, being in Laurel Park. So I'm just, wanted maybe, I guess, get your, your take about how you, um, thought about that in design.
I see. I'll toss it over to Tim Wood.
Tim Wood with Novak and Fraus Engineers, uh, four six six, I'm sorry, four six seven 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 Woodward, Pontiac, Michigan. So the landscape plan has been designed such that the detention basin will be restored with a seed mix that is capable and suitable for being inundated with water regularly when it rains. And for the extended period of time, the two to four days of the detention basin will hold water. So the basin should maintain a, um, natural look from the plantings, from the, the, uh, grass that's planted, as well as the trees along the perimeter of it.
And so the, the intent would be that that would just be mowed down like lawn space adjacent? Or would it be left a little more, uh, natural looking?
Likely it would be left slightly longer, um, but they would, uh, mow it from time to time, I'm sure.
Okay. Yeah, I think we just talked about just wanting to avoid fragmites and that type of, type of look in this, in this landscape. So, um, and I think maybe just a consideration when you work through engineering, you know, the bottom of those basins do get pretty soggy. So if, if there's the opportunity for an underdrain or something to, to kind of dry it out a little more quickly, I, I think that would help in making sure that this, you know, can be attaining that, uh, that look. So, but other than that, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drows. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Richard?
Gentlemen, in our, uh, study session, we talked about the, uh, overgrown scrub and unattended to landscaping along the northern and kind of the western boundary line that's adjacent to the drive that currently services the, the drive-throughs. And I, uh, I understood it to be your, your statement that you really weren't sure that was yours. And I understand that. But I was back there again today, and I noticed that the construction to the west, where they're building the two new stores, they're, they're very carefully avoiding that strip. So it appears to be my, their assumption that that's yours. And you're uncertain that that is yours or not theirs. So I guess, and, and you did address this during your, during your presentation, but I'd like to be certain that when it's all done, somebody looks after that strip, because it's certainly unsightly, and Mr. Drows made a good point that this is a fairly well-manicured site all over. So, uh, I, I guess this is an admonition as opposed to, uh, and a request as opposed to anything formal. You're paying attention to it, and we'd like to make sure that when you're all done, when it's all said and done, that strip of, of land there has been attended to and made part of your landscape plan.
Yeah, absolutely. No issue, uh, there by any means. We'll make sure that the, uh, the property lines staked and that everything on the property is cleaned up with this project.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Drows.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner, the representatives? No other questions? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Anyone in the audience? Anything else you'd like to say before we make our decision?
Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Uh, I will, uh, go to my colleagues and say a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ventura?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. A request to renovate the existing building and reconfigure the parking net seventeen one one one. Laurel Park Drive North is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval, and the following conditions. Number one, landscape plan identified as Sheet number L two dated March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, prepared by NF Engineers is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, all regular parking spaces shall be double striped and measured ten feet in width. Number three, all disturbed lawn areas, including road, rice, away, shall be sotted instead of hydroseeding. Number four, underground sprinklers shall be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas. All planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and then permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number five, the exterior elevation plans identified as Sheet number A dash two one one, A dash two one two, and A dash two one three dated March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, prepared by Citiescape Architects are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number six, the walls of the refuse enclosure shall be consistent materials that complement the building. The enclosure gate shall be solid steel or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. Number seven, all exterior light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet in height and should be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number eight, only conforming signs are approved with this petition. Additional signs shall be submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number nine, no exposed LED light band or neon shall be permitted, permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number ten, that the petitioner shall submit for approval an ongoing fragmite control program as approved by the Department of Public Works describing maintenance operation to the City of Livonia Inspection Department prior to the construction of the stormwater retention basin. That all existing landscaped areas shall be cleaned up, remanaged, and permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number twelve, specific plans referenced to in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department when the building permits are applied for. And number thirteen, under Section thirteen dot thirteen of Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the City Council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion to approve made by Mr. Ventura, supported by Ms. DeNaro. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, if our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura?
Oh, it's aye.
DeNaro votes aye. Uh, Mr. Drows?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Chair Wilshaw?
Votes aye, motion passes, and we'll go to City Council with an approving recommendation. And good luck on your project. Thank you for coming tonight. That takes care of the miscellaneous section of our agenda. We now move on to a pending item. This is going to be item number three, Ms., uh, Secretary.
Yep. Petition twenty twenty-five dash zero three dash zero eight dash zero two submitted by Krim Elraz under Section thirteen point one three of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, requesting approval of all plans to expand an existing commercial building by constructing a new two-story addition at two nine four four zero Schoolcraft Road, located at the northwest corner of Schoolcraft Road and Middle Belt Road in the southwest quarter of Section twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, Mr. Canty, do you want to give us some information? This has already been discussed at length as a pending item, but, uh, is there any new information that you'd like to present?
As we know, this is twenty twenty-five zero two zero eight zero one. He did come at the last, uh, Planning Commission meeting. Some new things have been talked to. We did talk to the Inspection Department, uh, and fire. Inspection noted that a elevator is not permit, is not, you, you don't need it in this site, so, because only two floors and, uh, there's no code that says that you need to have a elevator with two floors. So, um, the petitioner should adjust his site according, accordingly, since there is no elevator. And fire, um, they are in prog, in talks of having fire access from the Bob Evans site, which is to the east. And I believe the, uh, the petitioner will be letting you guys know that in his, uh, section of this meeting. Other than that, um, site plan updates. The dumpster has been removed onto the grass to the west. It also clears the, uh, existing overhead electrical wires. Detention, uh, dimensions were added to the parking, because they weren't added, uh, for the first time. Let me see. I believe we have the new plans here. A ten-foot strip in the back of the addition for possible route to the AT&T building, which is to the northwest of the site. which is to the northwest of the site. And there should be a hatch area, you can't really see it here, but it's on right here. There is a hatch area in green is the existing ten-foot easement to the AT&T building, so... Those are all of the changes that they made. Everything else is the same.
Okay.
The parking lot is in disrepair, so we do, um, request that planning commission suggest that they fix the parking lot.
Okay.
Other than that, then, everything looks good.
Okay, and is there any new correspondence on this item?
New correspondence would be...
Other than the plans themselves?
I'll just reiterate the fire marshal, just for, uh, to put on record. Um, this office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection in, with a request to renovate and construct a new commercial building on the property located at the above address. Uh, we have objections to this proposal with the following reasons. Uh, fire access road shall be, shall be provided with not less than twenty feet of an, uh, unobstructed width and have a minimum of thirteen feet, six inches of vertical clearance in accordance to eighteen point two, point three, point four, point one, point one, and eighteen point two, point three, point four, point one, point two, of the NFPA one of twenty-fifteen. Uh, eighteen point two, point three, point four, point one, point two, point two, which is vertical clearances or widths shall be increased when vertical clearances or widths are not adequate to accommodate fire apparatus NFPA one of twenty-fifteen. And then we have number three, eighteen point two, point four, point one, point one. Uh, the required width of a fire department access road shall not be obstructed in any manner, including the parking of vehicles. Access to any perimeter side of the building is limited to only one side, uh, which could also be compromised due to the landscaping of the side, to the south of the building. Uh, road widths on the east and the west sides of the building are not adequate, as well as no emergency vehicle access from the north side. Uh, number five would be permitted or limited perimeter access can hinder potential rescue efforts and suppression efforts. Clarification as to what is being stored, sold, or manufactured is taking, uh, is, was taking place, which we already, uh, clarified with, uh, cabinets and, uh, surfaces, uh, and countertops. Cl, uh, a further detailed plan will take place when, or further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan sets, with, that is from the fire marshal, Brian Kuklow.
I think most of the rest of the correspondence was older, yeah. It's, it's sort of a hazing ritual for our new planning staff that come to our meeting to make you have to read those NFPA code numbers. You did well.
Yeah, I tried my best.
Okay. Is there, uh, any questions for planning staff? Before we proceed, this item was tabled at our previous meeting. It would be appropriate for us to have a motion to remove this item from the table, if someone would like to make that motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And would someone support that?
Or?
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Ventura, by, supported by Mr. Drows, to remove this item from the table. If there's no objection, I think we can show five on that. I see no objections, okay. Uh, now we are able to go to our petitioner, our petitioners in the audience, feel free to come forward. Mr. Elraz, you've been here before, but, uh, just remind us of your name and address.
Good evenings, Kareem Elraz, two-nine-four-four-zero Schoolcraft.
Very good, thank you for being here again tonight. Uh, anything that you'd like to tell us, uh, from between what happened at our previous meeting and what's going on tonight?
I try, like, last time, like, uh, most of the conversation, it was about the service for the fire departments, and I went to Bob Evans, I talked to the manager there, he give me, he can take this decision, he give me number for the corporate of Bob Evans. I talked to Mr. Elmer, where I left him a message like three, four times, I didn't get any answer until now.
Okay. It sounds like, from what I've heard though, there'll probably be an opportunity for you to make some sort of an agreement to, uh, get that cross-access in the event of a fire. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll let you continue to work on that, uh, that particular task. In the meantime, is there any other questions, uh, from any of our commissioners for our petitioner? Mr. Drows?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think we talked about it a little bit last time, um, uh, I think I heard countertops. This is really, your intent for this space is for sales, or would there be any sort of cutting or manufacturing?
No, no manufacture at all, no production in this location at all. My production location is gonna be in totally different city.
Okay.
It's only a showroom, it's only for sales.
Okay. Uh, so, where would, um, 'cause there's been some comments in the fire letter about, you know, some of the access and, and the, the drive width. Do you anticipate any sort of delivery vehicles coming to the site, and if so, how would they maneuver?
No, I, I don't have any, anything stuck there, and, uh, we have only a display show, no delivery at all.
Okay.
In my location.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, um, the, the only other thing, um, I guess, is the, the brick that you're proposing, um, I think there's, uh, it looks like a brick on the front side of the building, and then, um, what type of, of block would be on kind of the backside?
Backside is gonna be face, uh, face, uh, cement block.
Like a cinder block?
Yes.
Okay. Um, would that have any color to it, or?
It's gonna be gray.
Okay. Have you, I guess, thought about maybe a different look? 'Cause I, I guess I am kind of seeing that we're, you are on a...
The front, the front is gonna be black, black brick with the paneling in the top of it.
Where I guess I was wondering is, you're on kind of the border of a, of a residential zone, and so I don't know, would you be willing to consider maybe on at least the side that faces, um, the residents to maybe incre, you know, improve that facade a little bit?
Yeah, no problem, sir.
We go with brick?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Drows.
So, just to clarify, on the, on the west side of the building, you continue that same brick that you have?
Same brick, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Drows. Uh, any other questions for our petitioner? Okay, easy peasy. Uh, there is no one else left in the audience. Anything else you'd like to tell us before we make our decision?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no other questions or comments, a motion is in order.
I would like to offer an approving resolution.
Go ahead, Ms. Dinaro.
That the request to expand an existing commercial building by constructing a new two-story addition at two-nine-four-four-zero Schoolcraft Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval, and the following conditions. One, that the site plan identified as A-one dated July tenth, twenty-twenty-four, prepared by Ziad Al Baba Engineering, is approved and shall be adhered to. Two, all just, all disturbed lawn areas, including road right-of-way, shall be sotted instead of hydroseeding. Three, underground sprinklers shall be installed for all landscaped and sodded areas. All planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and permanently maintained in healthy condition. Four, the exterior elevation plan identified as A-four dated July tenth, twenty-twenty-four, prepared by Ziad Al Baba Engineering, is approved and shall be adhered to. Five, parking spaces shall be double striped at ten feet wide by twenty feet in length. Six, all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening consisting, consisting of material compatible in color with other exterior material, materials on the building. Seven, that three wall, the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that complement the building, and the enclosure gates shall consist of opaque and durable steel or composite panels. Number eight, all light fixtures shall not exceed a height of twenty feet and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring onto adjacent roadways. Number nine, only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number ten, no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number eleven, unless approved by the inspection department, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Number twelve, the plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department with the building permit application, and number thirty, thirteen, per section thirteen dot one-three of the Livonia zoning ordi, ordinance, this approval is valid for one year from the date of approval by the city council. Unless a b, building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void after the one-year period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion made by Ms. Dinaro's, uh, Mr. Ventura.
Uh, I'd like the commission to question the date in, uh, number four. Exterior elevation plan identified A-four dated July tenth, twenty-twenty-four. We've had revisions to these elevations right up until this meeting.
Right.
Uh, that can't be the right date.
No, that, that's a year ago, almost. Two months short of a year ago.
It's also in number one.
So, is there a, is there an elevation plan that, or a date for the elevation plans that is more current than that, that reflects the building that we've talked about here this evening?
I see May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, yeah.
On, uh, A, A-dash-four.
Okay, so, May thirteenth of twenty-twenty-five is the most recent plan we have, and then there was, uh, a verbal, uh, addendum made at our meeting today to extend the brick along the western facade, uh, which probably should be reflected in that item number four.
Perhaps the maker of the petition would, or the approving resolution would put some verbiage in there that makes sure that the elevations that we're approving here tonight include all of the representations that have been made?
Yep, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, and our supporter is Mr. Drows, you're okay with that?
Yep.
Very good, all right, thank you, Mr. Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So again, we have a motion to approve, this is by Dinaro and Drows. Is there any other questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Drows?
I, I guess I'm not sure if I'm allowed to question my own support, but, um...
You can certainly do that.
I guess I'm doing it. Um, so, I guess one thing I think I would like memorai, memorialized in the motion is, um, satisfactory, um, acquisition of written permission from the Bob Evans site to the satisfaction of the fire department. Um, so, uh, 'cause I, that obviously is an issue that the fire department's brought up on a couple occasions, so I, I would request that, you know, in writing you have permission that, you know, if there's a change over that property use...
To be honest with you, I'm trying my best to get, like, approval from them, but the problem is, you know, Bob Evans corporate, like, to contact them is not easy. This is the first thing. The second thing, don't forget, I have a previous building in two-nine-four-six-zero next to Bob Evans, and already is existing building there.
I think what we can do...
We are not building anything from this side, my, the, the addition, it is in two-nine-four-four-zero.
In a...
I'm trying, like, I contact Mr. Elmer, like, more than four, five times, but I never receive any information from him. I'm gonna keep, uh, pushing, like, to get any access, like, from there, like, if we can cut, like, the curb and make, like, private gate just for the fire departments, I'm gonna keep following him to get this approval and give me a letter for this approval.
Right.
And soon I will get this, I'm gonna submit it.
We, we got it. I, I, I think what, uh, what's being asked for is, this is a recommendation of approval that's gonna move on to City Council, so this isn't gonna stop you from continuing on in the process, but, uh, what we're gonna do is, is part of one of the conditions of the approving, as you heard, a number of conditions, one will be that you do secure some sort of an agreement between you and Bob Evans. Uh, you'll have time to continue to work on that, uh, as you move forward to the City Council process, 'cause it's gonna take several weeks before you, you get to that meeting, so you'll have plenty of time, I think, to get that, uh, taken care of.
Okay.
And if it's an issue, comes City Council time, then you can address it at that, that point as to why, what your issue is. Is that satisfactory?
It's perfect, thank you.
Okay, so we'll have as a, an additional condition, uh, our planning staff will add, uh, something along the lines of ensuring that, uh, that an agreement is met between them and Bob Evans, uh, property owners, uh, for cross-access for fire safety, okay?
Yep.
All right, very good. Anything else, uh, before we, uh, take our vote? If there's nothing else, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll to approve.
Dinaro is aye, Mr. Drows?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
And Chair Wilshaw?
Votes aye, motion passes, we'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. Good luck with your projects.
Thank you so much, sir, thank you.
Thanks for working with us on that. All right, and, uh, now we move on to approval of minutes. This is the easy stuff.
Motion to approve.
All right, so this is gonna be a motion to approve by Mrs. Dinaro to approve the minutes of the one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth, uh, meeting, which all members were present with the exception of, uh, Mr. Bonjero, but he's not here anyway, so he's not gonna vote. Is there, uh, support for that?
Support.
That is made by Mr. Long, so that's gonna be Dinaro and Long approving. If there's no objection, can we show five on that? I see no objections.
All right.
All right, that's been approved. Uh, is there any other business that come before the commission? If not, uh, I do wanna make a couple brief comments. One is, uh, this is the first meeting that, uh, Mr. Canty has, uh, has served as a, our planning department liaison, and he's done a wonderful job, I just wanna acknowledge his work tonight. Uh, it's not easy to, to do your first meeting, and you look like you were, been doing it for years, so, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, also, I, I do wanna thank our, uh, acting secretary, Ms. Dinaro, for filling in tonight as well, this is her first, uh, shot at doing this, and again, not easy when you've never done it before. Uh, the other announcement I do wanna make is, uh, this coming Monday is Memorial Day, and, uh, as just as a reminder, uh, it's a day to honor and remember those who have sacrificed, uh, for our country, they've made the ultimate sacrifice. Uh, so, uh, the city will be observing that holiday on Monday, and if anyone is interested in, uh, the city's observance of this holiday on Saturday, this coming Saturday, uh, morning at the Veterans Memorial, which is at the northeast corner of Five Mile and Farmington, uh, also, there's a, there's a whole memorial and, and flag, uh, area there. Uh, there will be at nine AM a presentation and a very solemn ceremony, uh, which is also, uh, uh, really good to come, see if anybody gets a chance to go, uh, watch that. It's, uh, it's done very well by our, by our city staff and, and, uh, attended by city leaders and also residents and, and people throughout the community, so it's a, it's a good event if, uh, anybody is interested in honoring, uh, those for, uh, Memorial Day, uh, so I just wanna mention that. Uh, with no other information to present, I'm done with my announcements, and a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
By Ms. Dinaro and supported by Mr. Ventura. That is a motion to adjourn. Again, if there's no objection, I think we can show five on that. I see no objections, and I will be adjourning the meeting at eight oh eight PM, and thank Livonia Television staff for bringing our meeting to the community. Good night, Livonia.